Okay, I guess we can get started. So. John?
Two, three things.
All right.
Uh, so, update on where we are. Currently, uh, everything's running really smooth out there except for the rain and that's really hindering us on curb, gutter, base, asphalt. But that is in the works. They're painting, they're finishing drywall, they're hanging a little drywall. We getting ready for the generator or stater to be brought in here, uh, Memorial Day weekend by TBA. We were supposed to have it three weeks ago when we had some heavy rains and it flooded the, uh, uh, docks, uh, reported, uh, in, uh, Memphis. So they couldn't get the stater to down to put it on the barge. So they will start this process, uh, so the first of the week with twenty-seven and get it in here on the prior week and get it floated up here on the barge and offload from the barge and bring it out to the side and then offload it off that truck and put it on a hillhopper trailer, which is a self-propelled trailer. And then they will use that to, uh, get it inside the building. It's a free growing out process, uh, so we'll be there to help them when they bring it. I've requested that they get it, if they're going to do it on a holiday weekend, they get it there over the weekend and leave it and we'll be back on Tuesday morning to work with them to get it in the building. So that's still up in the air right now, but that's the way we'd like to see it happen. So, uh, everything's progressing out there really well, looking good. Anytime any of you want to come take a turn, give me a call and I'll get you out there and we'll go through the building.
I'll have to be down there when the, uh, get that generator out.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I will be down.
Leave behind and see you.
Yeah, on holiday weekend to see it, but I would like to.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah. But it's, uh, y'all gonna be very proud, have a building to be very proud of, so that's all set and done. Uh, one of the challenges that we're up against out here is we designed this building originally with the mindset of we had one tenant in the building. So own infrastructure for the data cabling, uh, with five different entities in the building, we actually have to have six different servers in the building versus one. So, uh, we've got to add a lot of data cabling, um, quite a number of, uh, data cabinets in different locations throughout the building in a, in order to serve everyone because all of them have their own private server and s- and, and data, data systems. So with that in mind, uh, we've got to change order from the contractor for a hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and thirty cents. And that, uh, that's a hundred and twenty additional data cables with two to three hundred feet in length on each one of them, plus all the cabinets, all the switches, everything that's, that goes along with that, which is a lot of work. So, uh, we need to get approval from y'all to spend another hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
And you need that added tonight, John?
No, it's just a request. It would be good to have a verbal approval if we could get it so we could go ahead and start ordering materials because on this particular data cable, we have between a three and four week delay in getting the cable, uh, it being bought up as they make it and there is no surplus on the shelves, so we have to get in line with our order just so we can get the material. And I don't want to delay, uh, ceilings and all going in, uh, and delay the opening of the building.
Would that take care of all of our security cameras and all of that?
And what if we got one security camera and one door lock out there, John? Could you go over that with the commission? I thought some of them had some concerns about that.
Okay, so we're, uh, very well covered with cameras throughout the, uh, building at the front entry, uh, the parking lots, the corridors downstairs, um, cameras inside the, the, the buildings and all of the corridors and the public, uh, assembly area. Everything in this building is covered with security cameras.
Then we've got keys to get in with, right?
We have keys and we have, there's, uh, we have three exterior doors that have, uh, four that have, uh, key cards and everything has a backup key system. So, uh, doors that are not used, that are not meant to be used for, uh, public access and daily access are not on a key card system, uh, they're on a, a key lock system.
And you can also get, be issued a code to push button in?
Yes. Uh, we can push button in or you will, uh, if there's a secretary at the front desk, uh, in the advent area, they mash a button and buzz you in, uh, either way. But the building is very secure with cameras, uh, all over the facility.
And if somebody, y'all, if somebody attacks from the west, we actually have a barrier up there that we can, that we can get by.
That's a big problem. Yeah, so we're, uh, uh, we are covered very well now on your, um, security controls and your cameras, uh, that is separate to the, uh, uh, data system, uh, data controls, server cabinets and all that. So for your cameras and your security control, it is a fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollar ad. Fifty-eight, six, thirty-five point seven five. We are in the process of roughing in all the conduit, basically all the conduit is roughed in, uh, for the, uh, railways to get all of the, uh, wiring in place for the cameras and.
And that was in the original contract, correct?
That, yes, yes. The conduit and all is in the original contract, so this is just for the equipment and the wire. And then there was one more item, uh, I think Brooke has the, uh, information on. We need a letter signed, uh, from Mr. Pettis and it is to ask the City of Florence to relocate the current, our current temporary transformer from the Workforce Development Center, uh, out to Highway seventy-two. And, uh, they're going, if the City of Florence gets the transformer back when we get finished with it, but, uh, it's just, we're finished with it and we need it relocated somewhere else and, uh, we have to get a letter signed by the chairman before they will disconnect it and move it out of the way. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank y'all.
Okay. Sure, oh. First of all, just to remind everybody, this is National Police Week. Started yesterday, runs all week, week with the, uh, recognize all the law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. I'm actually flying up to DC tomorrow to attend those, the ceremony and stuff up there. You know, our deputy, Randall McCrery, will have his name placed on the wall up there this Thursday, but I'm gonna fly up there tomorrow and be up there for some of those events and stuff, so. Police Week all week long. I know, I talked to a couple, couple, three of you about the jail, well, problem we had with the locks and possibly like an emergency type spending on some maintenance, uh, issues down there. Everything's fine right now and I still don't know more than I knew over the weekend, so they're still working on it and I'll let Ms. Brooke know, uh, you know, as soon as they give me more details on that. But everything's safe and secure and I'm just kind of waiting to hear the diagnostics on our diagnosed problem and that. Other than that, uh, everything's doing good. I don't have anything.
I'm in the wrong place. Okay, Ron?
Thank you.
Brad Drew.
Sir, no sir.
All right, Eric?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a few quick updates this evening. Mowing and spraying, as far as I know, we have, we have started bush hogging. If you recall, last year we budgeted the, uh, that new mantis, which I call our spaceship. It's a, it's a unique looking animal that we green machines, it's got a big combine head on it, uh, but that thing is phenomenal. It's doing a great job. Uh, they, I'm, I'm getting some really good compliments and, and hope y'all hear some good feedback on it, that he started in the west end of the Limestone County line and they're just kind of working their way across and so they've made a lot of progress, they're doing really good.
In the west end of Limestone County line?
No, in the east end.
Yes, okay, well, I'm not calling you out, not calling you.
We just let it go.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I wasn't sure what he meant.
So, I'm trying to even things out. So, we are still spraying in-house some dirt roads, smaller roads, but, uh, tonight on the invoices, there is an invoice for where you're paying our contractor that came in and sprayed the, the bulk of my roads and so, uh, that's done. It, it did a really good job, um, as always, I mean, I would love to tell you that we do that every year, we spray a thousand miles of roadway with no hiccups. You know, we, we did get a few road bushes and, and some stuff, some places that we were not supposed to spray. I did learn last week though that our contractor, uh, they have some new technology that they have a no spray map now, which they just look at the map, they look at the roads, they're like, we're not supposed to, you know, spray in front of Miss, Miss House and they are updating their system next year that it will be a mechanical barrier. They will, the truck will not spray. If we put it on a map, their truck will physically not be able to spray in front of that address.
Even if they hold their phone down?
They said the button won't even work. I, I don't know how they're doing it, but apparently this is an issue. So, it's, yeah, those guys are good. I mean, that's just probably how.
You remember Ms. Kershaw and the thrashing we had that day?
Yes, sir, I did. And, and inevitably we'll spray, you know, inevitably our guys do it too, that they'll accidentally spray something we're not supposed to spray. We know and it, there's, you know, I just stand there and yes ma'am, yes sir, so sorry, you know, and, but it's just an accident.
Won't do it again.
Won't do it again, so, um, so we, we did, uh, have a little incident last week with some corn, uh, this concerned me a little bit, we'll have to address that, I'll, I'll get with, uh, Brooke on that and we'll, we'll figure out how we handle that, but it's.
Was that in the west end?
No, it wasn't in the west end. So, uh, but we're, we're, something like that happens every day and a lot of times this stuff will, will yellow up and it'll come back and so we're, we're kind of watching it, but, uh, but overall, I've been very pleased with our, our hopes out this year. Next thing, paving, we're still waiting on Rogers Group, we're still about three weeks out from when we think they'll get here. Our Palmer crew is just doing phenomenal, I was out with those guys this morning, they, they just figured it out and I, I just really wanted to thank y'all again. I was out there this morning watching that brand new tanker with that brand new rotor clamor behind it with a brand new roller, like we have everything we need. I don't have any good excuses, what I'm trying to tell you, like, and the guys are getting it done, they, they are really moving, we don't, we don't have any equipment breakdowns, none of that stuff's going on, they're just out there going, so. Now, they're on a County Road twenty-seven right now, which is a very busy road, it's, uh, uh, Mitchell, uh, I keep thinking it's out at, uh, Mr. Tate's place up there, uh, I'm trying to think of the nickname for that road, but, uh, but anyways, that's a busy road, so you may, you may get some calls on that. It, it is a unique process, a lot of people don't know what we're doing, it can be dusty at times and if the wind blows wrong, it can, uh, it can look worse than it really is, but the guys are doing a really good job and so I'm, I'm super proud of them, so. So all that's on schedule and going good. Happy Hollow, still no update on that, so just don't want you to forget about it, hope that, hope that goes good, but we're still, we're just waiting for that, for that conversation. Uh, and then the last thing I've got, uh, I was called this morning, uh, by another county engineer and, uh, there's a lobby group out of DC called the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. Those guys, um, we, we get a lot of communication with those guys back and forth, just we, like this year, is we fought the forestry industry based on their trucks. These guys do that at a national level. They're, they're constantly watching states, they're watching national stuff to make sure that, that weight limits don't even get increased. And they're doing a fly-in on June third to fifth in DC to talk with our, uh, national legislators about, about this issue and they're specifically wanting Alabama guys to be there for it because of what we just did with the forestry industry, which was a huge win for us and so, um, if y'all are okay with that, they will actually pay for it, so. If y'all are okay with that, I'd love to go up there and lobby on your behalf, Mr. Garner.
Love you, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
So that's pretty smart. You asked for a trip and then I don't got nothing else, I kept it short.
And he said it's crazy.
Okay, Tom. Just a quick, we, uh, last, we, since October one, you know, we all know how the county's growing, uh, we put out five hundred and forty-six new carts this year to first, first-time homeowners. Most of us in the east end of the county, west of Limestone County. But, uh, and, and we only get shipments of seven hundred and ninety-three when we get a truck load, so three-quarters of what we're getting in is, is going out as quickly as we can get them, so. Just want to tell you that, that's, and every month we see we're getting a little bit of increase on the number of people.
When, when does that go back to? What was the timeframe on the five hundred?
October one.
Till now? There's been five hundred new houses?
Five hundred and forty-six new households, or new residents, we put out, you know, first-time cart.
That would mean that.
Yeah, that's, you know, new houses or apartments or, you know, so. I thought that's pretty significant, that's, that's quite a few. So, and you know, Rogers will tell you there'll be more than that next year, so, if you can get water up there, so.
State's well aware of that.
Anyway, that's it, thank you, the other day, I hate that, but.
I appreciate you coming right out.
That's no problem, neighbors, we're grateful. Yeah. You should've got a video of that so Garner could see I did actually do something.
I, I've got one, remember?
Why is this always about Garner?
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To piggyback off of what Eric said with Happy Hollow, um, we've had some conversations with Mid Lauderdale Fire in particular, because if that letter does come back negative, then that creates a significant issue, uh, for a lot of their area, so we have a tentative plan in place. They're in the process additionally of looking for some property, um, on the north side of Happy Hollow to essentially build an additional station to cover, um, that area. And if that's unsuccessful, then I've spoken with the chief at Green Hill, Center Star and Killen, we kind of have a little bit of a game plan in place, so we won't lose any coverage, um, if we do have to make some of those changes or modifications, so just, so you can be aware, um, we've got the public safety end of it, at least temporarily worked out until a long-term solution can be found. We, as you all know, May fifth, last Monday, had that power outage, um, downtown, highlighted a problem that we need to address at some point, and I know that I'm always one that's crying, something's wrong, but, um, so last Monday, uh, power goes out downtown for just shy of two hours. At the same time, all four of your courtrooms had court going on, uh, plus your normal business to the point that the sheriff had to make the decision, no one could come in, no one else could come into the courthouse, it just wasn't safe. Had to conduct some elevator rescues, um, out of the courthouse, um, and it really highlighted the problem that we have because this building, nor the courthouse, nor the jail, have any type of backup power. So I've gotten the information from the utility department on what the usage is per day and per hour, um, at all three, three of those facilities, and once I have some more information, then I'll bring it back to the commission for your consideration. I think the next step, if the commission does want to move, then does want to go down this road, is probably going to be to engage an electrical engineer, um, to do the power plan. The jail, probably I think right now is, is going to be the most complicated because of the number of different systems that are in the jail, but as has been discussed in, in previous conversations, you can't flush the toilet if the power goes out at the jail. So significant problems there, um, in addition to your courthouse not being able to, to get people up and down and whatnot, um, not to mention your commission staff being stuck on the sixth floor. So, I'll come back to the commission when I've got more information about that. We did close out the last of the COVID grant, um, from our end of the house last week, so, Mr. Chairman, you should have some paperwork to sign, um, to get back to NACOG. That, if you'll recall, was the grant that funded the, uh, mobile vaccination trailers, that project, as well as some of the, um, equipment needs that the hospital had during COVID, um, and then also funded, um, some additional resources for responders to be able to communicate during, um, events, so we closed that out Friday. You're going to hear some conversation from ACCA about the regional emergency management plans. Lauderdale County passed their plan a year and a half ago, it's a five-year plan, um, in order to get in line with the other regional counties, it would cost the county somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. Our plan is still good for four years, so I respectfully decline to get involved in that right now, just doesn't make sense for us to spend that money, um, in twenty-eight, twenty-nine when we have to do that, then we'll, we'll kind of have that conversation. In your packet of information today, there's a request from our office, um, to use a portion of the opioid settlement money, um, eight thousand dollars, uh, to purchase four AEDs, um, that would be in our vehicles. One of the things that we're really trying to change within EMA, um, with my staff is I want our guys responding, I want, if our guys are close to an incident or close to a scene, I want them to be able to get there. Part of them getting there is having these resources, plus we do a lot of community events, we're working a lot with the school system and so we're out and about and it would be a resource that we can, we can use. The particular AEDs that we're talking about are the same, uh, equipment and manufacturer that the ambulance service uses as well as our volunteer fire departments, so if we have to use those, then the equipment to, the pads to, uh, to replace those are readily available and we can swap back and forth. I have talked with the sheriff because it is opioid money, um, and you should see a budget that, uh, Ms. Brooke has, has prepared to show you where that money is, there is additional money, uh, from additional settlements that has not been awarded yet and it's still going through the court process, so, um, it's anticipated that that three hundred and six thousand dollars will increase over time. And then last, uh, I know we've talked about it for the last year, but starting in two weeks, we'll start the, um, responder training for the new dispatch system, so that will start the second, or the last week, last two weeks of May and then the first two weeks of June, so that's when we'll bring, um, Florence Fire, Sheriff's Department, all of our rural law enforcement agencies in, we'll start training them on the new system. Once we go through that training with them, there'll be a two-week period to fix any bugs that we find, and then we'll start dispatcher training, we'll do dispatcher training for three weeks, then we'll have another two-week law to fix any bugs we find during that, and then we will implement the system starting, um, start, we'll soft roll it into service the first week in July. Excuse me. And have it fully in service by the fifteenth of July. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. So we have, we've obviously been talking for the last several months about sustainability within the ambulance service, um, we've had the meetings with a number of departments, you know, specifically Central had some concerns about response times and whatnot, and, and how we can lessen the impact that we have. So one of the things with ambulance service and an ambulance service that runs through nine-one-one is it works generally off of the same platform that any first response agency does, police, fire. And the way that that system works is it's first come, first served, because it's the only thing that's there, so if a call comes in about a barking dog, then we're going to send Sheriff Hamilton's first unit. If the next call's a domestic, we're going to send his next two units. If the next call is a cat stuck in a tree, we're going to send the next unit. And then when that shots fired call comes in, he may not have a unit that's available. It's all based on first come, first served, because the sheriff and the deputy is the only option. And similarly, right now with our EMS system, sending an ambulance is the only option. However, if you look at medicine and emergency medicine within our community, we're blessed in that, we have like sixteen urgent care clinics situated in different areas throughout, throughout Lauderdale County. We have the technology now in place to do telemedicine, um, but we don't have a really, we don't have a resource to connect those patients with the appropriate level of care. And so in working with AMR and looking at models throughout the country, there's a, a process called nurse navigation, um, that would allow us to work with our medical director, work with the hospital to develop a list of criteria, and when an individual calls nine-one-one and meets that criteria, then we have the opportunity to transfer them to a live licensed nurse in the state of Alabama. They would then have a conversation that nine-one-one dispatchers really aren't qualified to have, get into medical history, start to understand the root causes of whatever that emergency is at that time, and then place them with the appropriate resource. That may mean that they need to go to the hospital by ambulance, but it also may mean that they probably need to go to the hospital, but they've got to get twenty-four, forty-six hours or forty-eight hours before they need to get there, and in those cases, we will set them up with transportation to the hospital, um, we'll stay with them while they're at the hospital, take them to get their medication and then bring them home. Or it may be a situation that they need to go and, uh, and, and visit with a urgent care center, so we would, through, through this resource of net, or through this network of resources, place them with the right person, right, right place, right time. So that's nurse navigation kind of in a nutshell. The, uh, ambulance committee, uh, met with AMR and also met with Clark County, Washington, who has this program established. Now, their population is about five times our size, however, the demographic and the current emergency, uh, nine-one-one ambulance system is very similar to us, so I can look at it from a per capita standpoint to determine what those ratios look like. And in that conversation with them, what they've been able to do is they've increased the number of available unit hours within their ambulance up to, or increased it by about a thousand hours per year, okay? So that's a thousand hours that an ambulance isn't moving somebody around or holding a wall at a hospital or doing things that are non-emergent, right? So for our friends in Central, that means those ambulances are not having to come necessarily from behind Walmart Neighborhood Market where Station One is, because those ambulances are more readily available where they're supposed to be stationed, okay? So we had that conversation with them, the committee, um, made a motion and voted to move that to the county commission for consideration, as well as to the city council for consideration. So as I told the committee last week, I'll have some documentation to Brooke by Wednesday of this week, um, for you to begin the review process, to see if it's something, um, that the county is interested in. The initial startup is seventy thousand dollars. That seventy thousand dollars would be split equally between the city and the county, and then every call that's transferred to nurse navigation has an eighty-dollar per call fee that would be billed out based on jurisdiction. So if it was in the City of Florence, then that would be billed to the City of Florence, if it was in the county, it would be billed to the county. We know statistically, um, that about sixty percent of the calls are coming from within the City of Florence and forty percent are coming from within the county. So if you kind of look at it in those terms, you can kind of gather what you'd see. What we anticipate is roughly between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and ten calls, uh, per month would go out of the nine-one-one system and go into the nurse navigation system.
So that's eighty dollars per call, right?
Yes, sir.
And that go, and, and who, and who, did you say the county would pay for those?
No, sir, it would be split based on jurisdiction, so if a call, if a call came in to, or came in from Lexington, then that would be a county call. If a call came in from Magnolia Gardens, that'd be a city call.
But do we not put that on the individual, it's like in the call?
No, well, currently, no, we wouldn't.
So are you thinking seventy-two hundred dollars a month roughly to us?
Roughly.
So what, what do you get for the upfront cost?
So the upfront cost builds the system out, um, it provides the dispatcher training, it provides the onsite training, it provides the networking, it would provide for their team to come into our community to start working, um, with the urgent care centers to determine what their capacity is, what resources they have. You know, for instance, this afternoon, my son's going to Hamilton Clinic in Killen because he needs his thumb x-rayed. It's easier to take him there after school than to take him to the hospital and a lot cheaper, right? So Hamilton has the ability to do that. Green Hill has the ability to do some ultrasound work, so they may be listed as an ultrasound tech location. The Huntsville Hospital Clinic at Cox Street in the Boulevard has diagnostics that are available there, and, and so there's different places, um, there's a, there's a, a urgent care. Um, there's a, there's a urgent care on Mall Road that can do all of your lab work. And so those relationships would be built by their team, those agreements would be set, um, within their team. And so the $80 per call that we're paying for is we're paying the salary or a portion of the salary for the nurse. And then also, um, they will tell you in the, and in the conversation, they reach out to Uber and the Lyft. And if we don't have a, a solid Uber and Lyft, um, footprint within our area, then they would market that to bring more of those drivers in. Um, that $80 covers that Lyft ride back and forth to get them to, to each of those places and whatnot. So the value to us is, number one, there, there's a PR value in that we're getting ambulances from point A to point B quicker. The, the additional value to us is we are paying right now for an ambulance to do emergency calls. And what we, what's happening in a lot of cases is you have individuals who really don't need to go to the hospital, but they need a prescription, they can't get their doctor, or they can't get in with their doctor quick enough, they know that if they call 911, an ambulance is going to come get them and they're going to get first priority at the hospital. So if we can free those ambulances, because we've only got six, if we can free those ambulances up to where they're running the calls that they need to be running, then today, this afternoon, rec comes out at, at Highway 43 and County Route 47. Um, individual has a, a medical episode and ends up in, in very critical condition. And so the timeframe to get an ambulance there from Killen ended up being almost 13 minutes, because that ambulance, when the call came out, was at the hospital taking someone who probably, in my unprofessional opinion, didn't need an ambulance ride, that was the only way that she was going to get to the hospital. And so if we can eliminate that, that group out of our system, then we're going to provide, you know, a better, a better product for our community.
So can you, can you bill insurance on, on this brand?
Can we bill insurance? No, sir.
So let me ask you this. What stops, what stops me if I get a really bad call and I call and I use this service? What stops me, what stops everybody in the county from doing that?
There's nothing that stops everybody in the county from doing that.
But that's going to cost us $80 a week. Let's see, and it's free to them.
There are, there are certain guardrails that are within the protocol that would hopefully keep a lot of that out. Is there going to be someone who, who abuses it? Absolutely. Um, you know, there is, there is, there are laws on the books for misuse of 911. Um, and I think that could be some, you know, potentially you could go down that road. You know, the sheriff and the DA's office probably wouldn't like me if I threw that out there, but, you know, to, to coil some of that, you can absolutely, you could absolutely do that.
Cause you know, my, my fear is that, you know, once everybody gets on board with this, you know, then, then that 7,200 number goes to 4,000.
Well, what I would hope, that what I would hope would happen is I would hope that that number did go to 4,000 and that we could then renegotiate the ambulance contract and not require every ambulance to be in advance and to go back to having some BLS units that are making some of those runs. Because I think, it, I, I mean, if we look, if we're looking, if we're forward looking, by this time next year, city of Florence will be a full ALS department. Right now, they're a partial ALS. They have their certificate, everything's in place, they just don't have all of the training completed. Once Florence has their ALS, then with very rare occasion, then they don't need advanced ambulances in the city of Florence. You're going to have a paramedic on scene with the fire department, your BLS is at that point in time just a taxi cab. And a firefighter jumps on board with them and rides it to the hospital. Once they're at the hospital, they're released to the hospital. What's interesting to me with this is this is the first proposal that we've come up with that the hospital CEO has been 100% in favor of. And I think Mike recognizes that he's, he, part of the clog in this whole system is the number of people that he has to treat because they presented the ER. And if he can get some of that out of there for him, then he can focus on what's actually a revenue stream for him with those, with those patients that, that genuinely need to be there. How, how long would we be locked into this? One year. That's all they ask for in the contract is one year. And then we can reevaluate it past that if it's not something that we want to continue with, um, or we can, you know, look at, look at other opportunities. The, the other thing that I think's going to happen within the next two years, as we continue this, um, there, well, let me back up. So Mr. Smith and Mr. Musgrove have been asked to look at the legality of creating an ambulance authority. Um, as we've talked about, in order to do that, where we end up purchasing the assets and then contracting the labor, best case scenario is that that goes to the legislature in 2026, gets approved, and then there's a referendum on the ballot in November. Because our mark date is April of 2027. April of 2027 is when the current contract with lifeguard expires. So any strategic moves we're going to make are going to have to be made between now and '27. My thought process is we can't afford, as, as government, to invest in additional ambulances to the tune of $600,000 to $900,000 per ambulance. That just doesn't make good logical sense. So if we can put programs in place that start educating the community and directing the community to the appropriate resource, then as we go through that education process, then it's, it's beneficial. Um, you know, I'll, I'll use, you know, some, something that Rodney did a couple of years ago. When I was on commission, I thought he was crazy for doing it, and that's putting kiosks in places throughout the county. Cause I was like, there's not going to be any adoptability of this. Everybody knows to come here. But fast forward a couple of years and they're being used. And it'd be kind of the same philosophy with this. We start to educate as we educate, as we build those relationships, then people in the community start realizing that an amce ER is not the only option. And through that, you know, we, we end up progressing. Any other questions about that? Okay. Then like I said, I'll have, I'll have something to Brooke this week and, um, start reviewing it, ask all the questions. I've gone at this from, from the standpoint of what holes can I shoot in it? What am I missing? Um, and there have been some things that, that we've had to discuss. There's some language in their original contract that we're not going to be agreeable to. Um, so I'll give that to you. I don't anticipate it being a short process. I know that the city, um, the mayor has asked that it be sent to him and then he's going to refer it to Public Safety Committee, and then that'll get referred to Finance Committee, and that'll get referred to the Elections Committee. So it, it's going to take a little bit of time within the city. But I'll have all of the information to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, we, we, we're going to work on the issues on the statutory things y'all asked me to look at. Uh, I've looked at them, analyzed it, also reached out for a, a second opinion and research effort of our litigation attorney in Huntsville. Uh, it's been an hour on the phone with him today, getting him up to speed. And with your permission, he will do, he will look at those issues and I will look at them independently. So you'll have two different lawyers coming at the same issue and then we will have a, bring him over for, uh, executive session to discuss those things. And, uh, so in anticipation of y'all approving that, I kind of put him on the road to work on starting with that. And of course, I'll talk to y'all individually about your individual issues and go from there.
Any claim doubts or any.
All right, Brooke, who ready to interview a Dang Yar?
I don't really think anything.
See, I, see, I asked her.
Do you have anything?
I thought you were on the list for something big.
I don't know. Um, I've got students coming next week. They're all start working this month.
All right, I'm on an interview, Mr. Brad.
No.
And, um, we're going to keep on this, it's, um, legislation is going to be introduced about recording meetings, hall commissions and board of educations. So at some point, we'll set a new website, we can do closed captioning, you can't have to do it all on YouTube.
Now, so.
There's legislation that's going to be introduced about posting and recording and commission meetings and board of education meetings. They gave us a copy of it at conference, but I had a copy of it back in February where they had about eight of us go through and read it. And there was kind of a stipulation of between 24 hours having it posted versus having two days to have it posted.
What did it pass?
Good.
I don't think it's passed yet.
Well, it's not on.
You say I want to be here?
I'm worried if it's something there, your association.
So it's in this session?
If it's on one.
It's something there. I think the association's boring.
So it's on this session, though?
I know, but if, you know, if it ain't passed now, there's nothing.
For next year.
And they tell us to go ahead and get the mayor for equipment. So I'm going to get past and get about having a camera that's going to be in front of the ceiling. It kind of comes down and not have the microphones in front of you. Try to have microphones in the ceiling coming down so that it's not all congested and everything else is out. We're going to figure out the logistics itself. But maybe it's going to follow the process.
You got anything?
Yo, now you're telling me.